Good evening, welcome to the January 28th regular meeting of Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Nelson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we bow our heads to reflect. We give thanks for our many blessings for this great city, its citizens, and our privilege to serve them. Tonight, as we conduct the people's business, may we be mindful of those whose lives and futures are fraught with peril, hardships, frustration, and despair. We pray that all in this chamber will display tolerance, courtesy, and a steadfast conviction to be forthright and just. We especially seek to be principled in purpose, find clarity of thought, show soundness of reason, display integrity in judgment, and have purity of conscience. And as our nation confronts so many challenges, let us reject blind partisanship, divisiveness, and intolerance too often practiced by some who stand on the national stage, show civility, courtesy, and statesmanship, embrace inclusive representative democracy, and boldly respect the rule of law. And when we leave this chamber, may it be said that our actions arise from wisdom and a vision that is pleasing to a divine will and purpose. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we will have recognitions. First is a presentation by Diane Boardman of the Muscular Dystrophy Association to the Lynchburg Fire Department. And I have a few words I'd like to read. For more than 60 years, firefighters across the country have been raising money for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. The Lynchburg Fire Department and its employees have participated in fundraising for this worthy cause for more than 20 years through a variety of efforts, including the popular "Fill the Boot" campaign. In 2019, firefighter Peter Keller and his team coordinated our collection efforts, including receiving donations from local businesses. These efforts, coupled with the overwhelming support of our community, allowed us to collect just over $50,000 in one week to help support the local chapter of the MDA. Here with us tonight is Diane Boardman from the MDA and Fire Chief Greg Wormser, thanks to all of those in our community who supported the fundraising efforts. I know the funds will be instrumental in assisting so many families. Chief Wormser and Ms. Boardman, if you'd like to come up? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If you could get him to... So, Peter, thank you very much for your efforts in putting your team together to making sure this was a successful event. As the mayor pointed out, for over 60 years, the International Association of Firefighters has worked diligently to assist the muscular dystrophy, and is really one of their title sponsors. And so, we're proud to be a part of that. We're proud of our community for their donations and our connection to them. And so, this means a lot to us. We have several firefighters who are affected by muscular dystrophy and their family. We've had one firefighter who had recently retired because of muscular dystrophy. So, it's very important to us that we provide this type of assistance locally. So, Peter, thank you to you and your team. Diane? Peter?
It is an extreme honor to work with this department and to have the support of council and all of the citizens of the Lynchburg area. This is a 66-year tradition that, you know, we are so proud of. Over $650 million has been collected by firefighters all over the nation just in those years. And happily, we've had eight new medicines in the last four years. One of the firefighters helping the campaign has a daughter who was not able to move at all, and now she's moving, doing sign language, flirts with you, and just a wonderful inspiration. And her mother became a firefighter because of how she had to call them to save her daughter's life. So, we are very, very proud. This is also the 70th anniversary of the Muscular Dystrophy Association, so I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do this year. And I thank you, and I'm just so proud to work with you all and for your support. Thank you so much. We have a small plaque that just recognizes, "Thank you for giving strength to kids and adults with muscle debilitating diseases. 2019 Lynchburg Fire Department International Association of Firefighters, Local 1146, $50,000." Thank you so much.
Thank you, and again, thank you all for all of your work on that. Thank you so much. Next, I'm honored to have one of our mayor's youth council members here, and he is Mr. Aiden White. Please stand for us. Thank you. And Aiden attends Heritage High School. He enjoys taking advanced placement, human geography, and chemistry in school, and he is a member of the Heritage High School marching band, playing the saxophone. Aiden also plays basketball for fun over the weekends. He is a member of the National Junior Honor Society and has home to the Regional Science Fair for the Commonwealth twice. So, he has also competed at the Regional History Day twice. And so, Aiden is an active member of the mayor's youth council, and as a part of their attendance at council meetings, we welcome you here tonight. So, thank you for being here, Aiden.
Thank you.
Tonight's city council agenda is divided into four sections, which are consent agenda, public comment, public hearings, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda, and this section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. Yes, Councilmember Hegelsohn?
On this, I greatly appreciate, one, I'm glad that's only one item on our consent agenda, and I appreciate our clerk putting together 22 pages of minutes. I'm hopeful that what we can do is table this time. I know Councilmember Nelson had the correction, lots of things to read. I don't know if it changes anything, if we could wait next time so I can have a little more time to read it. I haven't been able to read all of it to vote on, if that's okay with everybody else. Be great. Thank you.
Okay. That's fine. We can table that? So, everyone's okay with that? All right. Do we need a motion to table that? No, we're just gonna set it. Okay. All right. There we go. That's fine. All right.
Madam Mayor, I would like to echo the compliments to the clerk. I know the minutes contained the comments from all the speakers. It was a significant effort.
She took a lot of time to do that.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's why I want to read it, so as much time as you...
Well, that's fine. If you would bring that back for us, but thank you for doing that as a part of the historical record. So, thank you very much. Next is public comment. During public comments, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. So, number five is hearing from a citizen, Kurt Deemer.
Kurt Deemer from Ward 3. Thank you, council. Polarization in our society is rampant. Ever since I first stood before this council in December, I have learned that firsthand. I knew it was bad, but I never imagined how far we have fallen as a culture. I believe in civil discourse. I believe it contains three things. Number one, humility. We are finite, flawed beings, and are prone to making mistakes. We need to enter into discussions and arguments with this at the front of our minds, but also reserve the right to change our minds when our arguments are shown to be problematic. I have seen the opposite of humility repeatedly from this council. The attempts to squelch a public hearing at all, the attempts arbitrarily inflict old rules and create new rules to silence us, and repeated reminders by the city attorney and council that it is not legally required to even listen to the citizens. All of these speak elitism. None of it exudes humility. Number two, you should have avoided binary thinking. The issues that are seriously debated in our public sphere are almost always too complex to fit into simplistic categories like liberal, conservative, Democrat, or Republican. This council is clearly locked in binary, us versus them, thinking, "We read your emails." Number three, avoiding fence building and dismissive words and phrases. It might feel good to score these rhetorical points, but doing so is one of the major contributors to our polarized discourse. Councils seem to be forever finding divisive labels like extremist or zealots to describe its peaceful civil citizens. Instead, you waited till we left the room, switched your votes, and tried to make sure you didn't even have to listen to us anymore. Instead of listening to the people that came out to EC Glass, you tried with new vigor to pass additional limitations in our speech, and then impatiently waited for us to get it over with so that you could lecture us with a three-page legalese speech that was pre-written, that you clearly wrote before you even heard us out. You put on a virtual seminar on how to have uncivil speech. Last Sunday, before I went to Richmond for Lobby Day, I received a death threat. They were warning me not to come. A member of the left-wing Antifa told me that he would bury me in one of the many cemeteries in Richmond. I went anyway. These death threats come from cowards who hide behind their keyboards and masks and have nothing civil about them. Just like EC Glass and the city council in December, hundreds of thousands of armed Virginians showed up again and proved once again, we are not the problem. If only this council had spent half as much time actually listening to the citizens as they did trying to find ways not to listen to us, maybe we could have found some common ground. Our founders gave us a way to deal with the elected representation that hold their people in such contempt. First, to speak and petition you, we tried that. Second, they gave us elections. We have one on May 5th, and two of you are going to ask, have to ask the people you just disrespected to vote for you again. Hopefully, those elections will give us an opportunity to start again afresh with a new city council that will truly be interested in civil discourse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deemer. Public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedures, staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Number six is public hearing regarding the petition of Victoria's Inventory LLC to rezon approximately four tenths of an acre located at 1151 D Street, 401 and 405 Rivermont Avenue from R4, high-density residential district to B4 urban commercial district, to allow the reuse of the existing buildings as 17 apartments. And staff will provide a brief summary of the request, Mr. Martin, but I will also turn to Councilmember Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I must disclose that I represent the petitioner in this action and was directly involved in the project that is the subject of this petition for rezoning. For that reason, I cannot be objective and must abstain.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Mr. Martin?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this petition proposes the rezoning of the subject properties to allow 17 apartment units. The existing units in 405 Rivermont Avenue would be brought into compliance with the zoning ordinance since there would only be two permitted there now. 14 new units would be constructed in the existing building at 401 Rivermont Avenue. This area is recommended for traditional residential uses. These are the city's older residential neighborhoods, generally built prior to World War II, and many of the lot sizes, setbacks, and buildings do not conform to the city's current zoning ordinance. 401 Rivermont Avenue has historically been used as a non-conforming commercial service garage. Rezoning this property would allow the continued use of the adaptive reuse of the building and remove a traffic hazard of vehicles entering and exiting the building onto Rivermont Avenue. The city engineer did not require a traffic analysis for the rezoning. However, the city is currently conducting a traffic study of the intersection of D Street and Rivermont Avenue. The property is served by Greater Lynchburg Transit Company Route 3A with a bus stop located directly in front of 401 Rivermont Avenue. A total of 15 on- and off-street parking spaces would be available to serve this development. Some exterior improvements or modifications to the properties were reviewed and approved by the city's Historic Preservation Commission. This petition was considered by the Planning Commission on December 11th, at which time they recommended approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Hi. My name's Casey Service. I'm with Architecture Design Office with Architects for the Project. Just to follow up on what Tom said, the three parcels are grouped together largely because of the building at 401, which is the main reason for the rezoning, was built to the property lines. And so, for egress, we'll probably be combining the three parcels into one. So, when we first met with city staff, they recommended looking at the three parcels together. And the property at 401 is the historic trolley barn for the old trolley line going out Rivermont Avenue. It's been used as a mechanic's garage more recently. So, we think that the adaptive reuse both saves the historic structure and brings it into compliance with the current use. And that's largely, the current zoning would only allow for three dwelling units in that trolley barn, and it's a around 10,000 square foot building, so they'd be three very large units. So, by rezoning, it allows us to make it a more financially feasible project. And that's generally it.
All right. Thank you. And did you say that the building was a former trolley?
Barn.
Barn, okay.
Yeah, so they used to come in and repair up off of Rivermont.
Okay. All right. I just, I didn't know if anyone understood that, because, okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Going once, twice? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right. There's no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got some questions. Mr. Martin, the 17 apartment units on four tenths of an acre, so if we extrapolate that per acre, that's 42 and a half units per acre, which is really, really high density. And the other thing that kind of puzzles me is we go from, the request is to go from an R4 zoning, which is a residential, the highest-density residential zoning we got, switching it now to a B4, kind of like what Councilmember Perro said earlier this afternoon, that some of these seem a little different. So, going from a highly zoned, high-density residential, going to changing it to a business zone, so we can simply put in lots of apartments in there. I can appreciate the adaptive reuse, but lots of this doesn't really make a common sense to me. Going from residential to business when we know that the use isn't going to be business, the use is going to be apartments.
Sure. This existing building was constructed in 1927 and has never been used for residential use. And I think, as the petitioner stated, this is a very large building, 10,000 some square feet on a very small lot. So, that really is what's justifying the rezoning to get the additional units. If you just went by strictly the R4 for all of the .4 acres, there would only be six to seven units provided for it. And I think in order to have these older historic buildings like this rehabilitated, we're gonna have to allow a certain amount of density in them.
And I understand the density, but it seems like the opposite. We're going from a residential zone to a business zone, so it can be residential. And we did, we spent a lot of money, actually, not long ago, on the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. You know, getting people in, talking about different flaws and whatnot. To me, intuitively, this doesn't make much sense to go from a residential zone, change the zoning, to be a business zone only so we can put in residential units. 10,000 square feet, I understand the size of it and how big that is, but 10,000 square feet, you know, with 42 apartments, I realize there's probably gonna be lots of floors in there, but...
It's 17 apartments between the two buildings, three in the one house and 14 in this. And it's going to an urban commercial, which is downtown, which does not require minimum lot sizes. That's the problem with trying to apply a suburban-style ordinance in R4 district, which requires a minimum of 4,000 square feet lot size to start with, and then an additional 2,000 square feet for each unit. It's just really not, you can ask Mr. West, but I don't think it would be financially feasible to rehabilitate this building with less units.
So, 17 apartment units are going in 10,000 square feet?
No. 14 are going in 10,000, and three are going in the other building, the house next to it, which are currently there anyway.
Okay.
This would...
And the four units in the house on Rick?
Mr. Martin?
There are units. I believed it was three. I believe Mr. West said it was four in the existing house. But because of the lot size, that's not conforming now either.
Yeah. It just, it doesn't, and again, nothing against the project, it definitely does not, you know, go with normal common sense, in my opinion.
All right. Any further comments? Councilmember Perro?
Thank you. I also have some questions. I understand exactly why you're pursuing this and looking at a B4, and it's very similar to what you and I, Mr. Martin, talked about on Court Street. It just doesn't make sense from a zoning perspective. You know, this, I think Councilmember Hegelsohn's right. I'd like to see us do something with the zoning ordinance so that we don't have to go through these zoning changes. So, tell me, what else is allowed in a B4?
Restaurants, office, anything that you could do downtown now would be permitted there.
Okay. So, this is a residential area. Is it in the, is it in the historic district?
Yes.
Okay. So, residential, the fact that it's the old trolley barn, I think is the coolest thing ever. That's great. So, I think it's in the city's best interest to ensure this stays residential, but if we change it to a B4, it could be something completely different.
It could, because the petitioner chose not to submit any proffers along with the petition.
And that concerns me a little bit.
Well, yeah, I think what, at least from planning staff's perspective, is we'd like to see this building rehabilitated and reused instead of sitting there and becoming blighted and derelict.
And I agree with you completely on that. I'd love to see this building revitalized. I love the idea. I love the concept of it. I'm just, it's, it leaves the door open for somebody else. For instance, you all could end up selling the property, and then somebody's got a B4 that could come down, assuming they can get the permits in the historic district, blitz it all and build a, I don't know, a five-story office building or something like that. I think your idea is probably more profitable than a five-story office building, but there's nothing to stop that. And that's the only concern that I have. Nothing to do with the project itself. I think it's a great project. It's the technicalities around what we're rezoning to. So, I'd be curious to hear what other members of council say.
Councilmember Wilder?
Thank you for the information. Question, I noticed was one objection at the hearing that you had. Do you know what that person's objection was?
I believe it was related to traffic.
Traffic?
If I recall correctly, and parking. Yet, again, 17 units, they have provided 15 on- and off-street spaces. It is on a bus line. The B4 district does not have a minimum parking requirement. The petitioner has chosen to show where, how they can park it, which I think is a plus, and if they can't, it's only detrimental to them.
So, did the Planning Commission have any other concerns themselves?
No, they voted to approve at seven to zero.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
So, I was, I read something about that intersection, Rivermont and D Street, that kind of comes together at a V. Has that been resolved in terms of what would happen with that?
The, my understanding from Mr. Newland is that the city is currently conducting a traffic study on that intersection, and it has not been determined what improvements will be made yet. The study will recommend those.
That looks like that could be a pretty dangerous situation.
Any further comments? Councilmember Perro?
Somebody else wants to speak. I know I've already spoken.
Councilmember Wright, did you have, okay. Councilmember Perro?
Just thinking about how this works, I'm also thinking about the hotel project that we haven't seen break grounds yet off of Cantler's Mountain Road that we rezoned to, without any, we rezoned without any conditions attached to it. So, it could have been a hotel, it could have been a giant apartment building. We're not sure what it could be, but it's a rezoned property there, not on Mayflower Drive, but in that vicinity. So, I'm worried about a very similar thing happening here. I think the, there's a significant risk in that area of town. The size of the lots here and the proximity of it, I think that the risk here is really And I would just like to see staff try to work out something so we don't have to do these changes. See if there's a way that we can, we either come up with another zoning designation that makes sense for downtown or something that would handle this situation for the downtown area or alleviate the parking concern to the, as you said, the suburban feel of the R4.
Well, that's what we attempted to do when we changed it to B4 urban commercial, that it would apply to these, could apply to these older buildings. If council is concerned about certain types of uses in certain areas, obviously, they could talk to the petitioner about proffers. I think one point, one thing that I would point out to you about the concern of it maybe being a five-story building is it is located in a local historic district, and the Historic Preservation Commission would, one, they would have input on whether or not the building could be demolished, and two, if they get, if that process was successful, then they would have input on what could be constructed on the property.
And I agree. That's why I'm saying that I think the risk is absolutely minimal on this. And I'm just making a point, and I don't want to jeopardize a project for a philosophical point. I think it's a good project, but I hope you all, or staff and council, understands the point that I'm trying to make. And I also talked a little bit ago about where we could, where we could try to have investments in infrastructure on the edge of our growing areas. And I think this is a perfect example. I'd love to see increased development going up that lower section of Rivermont. You can see it now. You're seeing houses. There's one house, I see they're rebuilding the porch and probably doing a tremendous amount of work on the interior. I think we need to look at that and other areas that are growing where we can get on the fringes. So, in the spirit of promoting quality development in areas that could use a little bit of, a little bit of investment, even though I don't like, don't like this from a philosophical standpoint, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Perro? Vice Mayor Dolan?
No, I just think the fact that it's in a historic, historical district kind of lessens my concern about future use.
All right. Thank you. If there's no, Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Tom, if you can pull up, I think it was page 64 of 302 for us, it's the colored map that shows the R4 or the B1, B4. I'm not sure if it's that one or if it's...
This is the zoning map. So, this is the R4 across D Street. There's B1, there's B4, conditional here.
That color looks a lot different than, than our, okay.
Yeah, it's like, it may be a color.
I've been accused of being colorblind.
I've been accused of being colorblind, so...
Is the other...
The colors are off on the projection.
They are, okay. Because, yeah, on ours, it's, it's colors all over. I mean, we're looking at a, an R3, a B4C, a B1, a B5, an RC, you know, so it kind of, that little spot that is now R4 would now, with this rezoning, would then again change to a totally different color, right there, right?
Correct.
So that's where the B4 would go, right next to the R4, right in front of an R3 and next to a B1. As Councilmember Perrow said, I, I agree with what he said. This isn't about the project, it's about the stuff. I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense. And so, and we're also having all sorts of different colors, which is totally different from, you know, almost like a, a spot zoning kind of place, it's not like a contiguous, here's what it is, it's just kind of whatever happens to fit. I do appreciate the ability to redevelop this property. I, I don't think it is the developer's issue, because obviously they came up with the solution to develop and said, hey, we can put this residential, high-density residential in a residential zone, but we gotta change it to a business zone. That isn't the developer's issue, I think that is, is staff's issue and our zoning issue. It just doesn't, it's nice when things actually make sense. This doesn't make sense, but because the development, I think is going to be good. I think Mr. West has done some fabulous things in the past and will do that again here. I will support it, the project. I just hope that, as Councilmember Perrow said, we can figure something out, because this doesn't make much intuitive sense, so, thank you.
Yeah, I had just something very quickly. Also, we ran into this problem with the former Garland Road School, had to make that a B4. And, and that was just for a very similar reason. So I think that's, I think we've got a compelling case to make a change. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes with one abstentia. Thank you very much. Good luck with the project, thank you, thank you. Next is number seven, the public hearing to consider a request to authorize the city manager and/or designees to execute a right-of-way and easement agreement with Appalachian Power Company for the installation and maintenance of a power line to serve Bedford Hills Elementary School, tax parcel number one eight zero zero five zero zero one. Staff will provide a, staff will provide a presentation. Mr. Newland, that would be you, thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This item concerns the city granting Appalachian Power Company an easement along property on Bedford Hills School to be able to put in an electric line to serve a new gymnasium that is currently under construction.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, with no opposition, there's no rebuttal needed, the public hearing is closed and the matter rests with council. This did go to Physical Development Committee on January fourteenth, 2020, so I will turn to our chair, Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PDC did review this and obviously it's a project that needed to happen. It's just putting power line to, to Bedford Hills Schools and it's necessary to improve the service to Bedford Hills Schools. So PDC by consensus said, we recommend this to full council and Madam Mayor, I make that as a motion on behalf of PDC.
All right, thank you, no second is needed, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero, thank you. Next is the public hearing to consider an ordinance to vacate a portion of city right-of-way, which is no longer needed by the city, located at the northeastern end of John Capron Road near its intersection with Odd Fellows Road. And again, Mr. Newland will provide a summary of the request, thank you.
Yes, once again, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is part of a project the city is constructing now, John Capron Road, which ties to Odd Fellows Road. There was a piece of right-of-way that is not needed because VDOT had to relocate the road further to the north, and in doing so, Bradley Thornhill had to give up right-of-way for that. So this is a parcel on the other side of the road that is not needed and he has requested to get it back from the city.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newland. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, with no opposition, there's no rebuttal needed, and this did also go to the Physical Development Committee on January fourteenth, so I'll turn to Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we did review this as well. And Mr. Newland, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, that the owners of the, of a, same owners, maybe a separate property conveyed a small portion of, of right-of-way to the city at no cost. You're nodding your head, so that's correct, at no cost. And it's about the same portion that now we are granting back to them, or the city would grant back to them, that, that is no longer needed. So it's a zero-sum game for the city. They were being good citizens by offering that to the, to the city, and now we're just gonna, we're not using it, so we're giving a equal section or approximately equal section back in another location. So a pretty fair swap, we thought, and it was by consensus, the, the PDC recommended to bring this forward to council, and I make that as a motion on behalf of PDC.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Perrow, there is no second needed. For Councilmember Hegelson?
Just nothing about this particular project, but on Odd Fellows Road, I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see that road complete and the bridge. And it is amazing, when you look on an industrial part of town that built this colossus of a bank, that is unbelievable, the best bank I've ever seen. I went inside, it's got marble, I mean, it is pristine. It's accentuating that area over there. You have the ability to just jet right over to get to 460. It is unbelievable, I'm so glad that, that came through. It's a fabulous place, and hopefully with this right-of-way acquisition, I know it's up a little bit, but it's off Odd Fellows Road, that improvements can still be made there. I think we've made a pretty good investment in that area, glad it's done, and, and if the bank is any indication of some of the investment that's going over there, I mean, that's a pretty darn good indication, so. If those of you haven't been over there to see that, it's, it's impressive.
Oh yeah, I use that quite often. Anything else? Any further comments? All right, please cast your vote, thank you. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next is general business, and this section includes general items of new business. Number nine is to review and consider Liberty Mountain Drive as an addition to the city's street inventory. And again, Mr. Newland will present this request.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. VDOT has requested that the city take over a portion of the road, Liberty Mountain Drive, from Cantor's Mountain Road out toward the Campbell County Line, which was a, previously was a frontage road for VDOT. It is now functioning more as a city street with Liberty over there now, the apartments that have been built and the parking deck that is under construction as well. So they have asked the city to take this section over for a city street. In doing so, the city would be responsible for maintenance on these three sections, but we would also receive maintenance payments from VDOT for these sections as well.
All right, thank you very much. And this went to the Physical Development Committee on October ninth, two thousand nineteen, so I'll turn to Councilmember Perrow again.
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor, we had a busy meeting that day. So this is, this is nice, if you look in the fiscal impact, this is about forty-two thousand dollars of additional revenue to the city. Granted, there are going to be additional expenses, snowplow, have to overlay it at some point or another, so, so this is, but that's still twenty, probably fifteen years out before that would have to be overlaid. So this certainly will offset those costs. It makes sense to have it in our, in our road inventory, allows our police to patrol it, et cetera, to make sure that people aren't trying to cut the corner too fast. I wouldn't think anybody around here would do that. And we, we recommended approval by consensus on council, so I'm bringing that forward as a motion from the committee.
All right, if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution endorsing the draft vision statement and guiding principles for affordable housing policies in the city of Lynchburg and the expansion of the Housing Collaborative. Staff will provide a summary of the request, and Mr. Wodaka is there before us, and Ms. Severchak, thank you very much.
I just wanted to introduce this. On November twelfth, council may recall, you had a joint meeting with the Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority to discuss a affordable housing policy vision statement and how we should expand the Housing Collaborative. Deputy City Manager Reed Wodaka will provide a full report.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Bonnie. As you're aware, last year, a number of city, city staff members were requested to provide written and research and recommendations for how, for policy options that are available to the city should city council decide that it wants to go after affordable housing issues in the community. These recommendations were based upon leading practices, research from the cities and counties throughout the United States for effective programs that are achieving housing affordability goals in their respective communities. This resulted in ten recommendations from that research, the first two of which, which were our priority recommendations, were, number one, that city council should establish a consistent vision for housing policy issues in our community, and number two, the existing Housing Collaborative should be expanded to take into account a number of professions and organizations that do have some impact or some major impact on housing issues in our community. As the city manager said, excuse me, in November two thousand nine, city council held a joint meeting with the Housing Authority to review, review the proposed vision statement that was drafted by the Housing Collaborative, as well as brainstorm other members that could be included in an expanded collaborative. After much discussion at that meeting, as well as a number of additional staff meeting, staff meetings, we revised that draft statement and included a number of guiding principles that we didn't really felt, didn't really feel fit into the actual vision statement, but we thought were really important based on the conversation that we had at the meeting. We also wanted to make sure that the goals that we had established or the vision that we established were consistent with our CDBG housing and non-housing goals that we bring forth to you. So the, the draft vision statement is before you and your council report, as well as the recommendations for inclusion of additional professional, professions and organizations to the Housing Collaborative, and we would be certainly very happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wodaka. Are there any questions that council members have? Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, I think it, I'd like to propose that we adopt the statement as presented here. We had a lot of community partners come together with council to, and the Housing Authority to, to draft this document. I think it's a strong one and sets the right vision for our community, so I think we should, I hope that we will endorse it here tonight.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Wilder, any further discussion?
I'm just looking at some of the programs, I'm glad to see they're working on families and strengthening families, and looking at issues with poverty and various other issues that result from that is the breakdown of families. So I'm glad to see them addressing families and other issues that will address poverty.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a question, and I appreciate the fiscal impact statement, because this is words, it's not actually doing anything. I mean, so there's no immediate fiscal impact, as you stated here. However, if policies and programs are enacted, there will be cost. And so with those, if, if any of those in the future are recommended, I'm hopeful that in the future, if there is something that is recommended, there will actually be a fiscal impact analysis that says what this cost would be?
Absolutely.
In the future, okay. And so with that, what we're looking at is, is adopting the words. You know, I'm, I can appreciate the concerns and, and, you know, affordable housing, a lot of that is, is a function of, of the market and what is there and, and the economic development for jobs, to afford houses. I'm just, I'm fearful that when we get in to other things, we end up being like, you know, a war on poverty that is older than I am. You know, that started in sixty-four, that's gotten worse. Or a war on drugs, that's gotten worse. You know, we've had, I don't know how many people have died recently because of an opioid epidemic, that we have, when government issues a war on something, I'm a little fearful, because sometimes the opposite actually happens. It exacerbates a problem rather than allowing things to, and the market forces to kind of work its way out. So I, I just hope that this is, we're not going down a path that is gonna, you know, make everybody's house have to be some, a function of, of another government program, right?
You know, sure. So I think if you, if you take a look at the, the work that we did over the last year, I think one of the really important things in that is that these housing issues are really complicated and they're really, and, and to your point, you know, there are no simple solutions. And I think what we propose in that document is that we have to think about this, these issues from a holistic perspective. And certainly there are, there are challenges that we can create by doing certain things, and hopefully, as we do fiscal impact statements and we do evaluations of different policies, that we will identify challenges that, that may come up as a result of our actions. And certainly that's, that's not the intent, and we will do our, do the best work we can.
And some of this, I know the, the collaboration of lots of nonprofits and individual groups kind of came together with the city, but the city isn't the one spearheading this, right?
Right, so, so the Housing Collaborative, which is a group of, of a variety of members, and so one of the things that we've, we've put into the statement is that, yes, we're gonna have nonprofit folks and lots of other folks, but we also have for-profit developers and that, and those, those sorts of folks that, that really do have major impacts on housing in this community. And so we think that a variety of voices, a diversity of voices, really can help us make better policy decisions and make better recommendations as well.
And so some of the, we talked about it a little bit this afternoon with regarding rentals and long-term rentals. And so sometimes what happens when we flood the market by rezoning, it, it makes some changes. So what kind of policies would you envision coming from this that would have a fiscal impact? I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm not fearful of what's before us, I just, I want to know what's gonna happen after.
So is the question, what, what policies could come about that could have fiscal impact, or is it about rental housing? I'm not sure.
Well, both with this, yeah.
Okay. So, so certainly, you know, in, in our work, we, we had a number of recommendations such as the creation of a housing trust fund and a variety of other things that could have, certainly have fiscal impact. Again, that's something I don't know that we will do or not, that's, that certainly will be up to council. You know, I, I can't speak necessarily to the decisions on folks having rental, long-term rentals or not. As you heard this afternoon, that's, you know, really, very, really very little that we can do to regulate that if we wanted to in the first place. So I think, you know, what, what I will say is again, you know, housing issues are very complicated, and so we want to make sure that, number one, we are not concentrating certain challenges in certain parts of the city, we're having a diversity of options for people. There's, there's lots of options that are out there and lots of opportunities for people to, to succeed. Again, I don't know, necessarily know exactly what the policy proposals will be, other than the ones that are listed in the work that we did, but we believe in a diversity of opportunities.
Thank you, Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm fine with the vision statement, what I'm getting a little hung up with is the expansion of the committee. Help me, walk me back through this, please, if you don't mind. Council does not appoint anybody to this committee, that's the collaborative.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
That's correct.
So why does council need to approve the membership composition?
I think, I think rather than necessarily approving the, the membership, I think what we're doing is we're, we're saying as a community, this is the vision that we're casting, and these are the kind of people, and the kinds of organizations that we think are very important to housing, and we're, we're just casting statements. As Councilmember Hegelson said before, these are, these are words, and we think they're important words, but they, you know, we certainly could add different folks to that, to that group as well. We think the, the folks that are on this list make a tremendous amount of sense for having major impacts on what housing, housing, a number of housing options in our community.
I don't disagree with you, I just know from the, from the tactical side, that it's hard to find people to volunteer to do this sort of work. We pull our hair out to find people that would be willing to sit on boards and commissions. And the, the language says the council expands the membership. I don't even know if that, that phrasing, I could say, I, you know, council endorses the future membership, or it endorses something, but to me, expand sounds like it's gonna be this big and that's what it has to be.
We could sure...
So, and the, the comment that I brought up to, to staff at the, at the retreat was that this group needs to be able to get something done. So it needs to be small enough to have, it needs to have good quality people that can provide great input, but be small enough to actually be effective and not get bogged down in, in, in discussions the whole time. I want to see results.
Sure.
And want to move the ball forward. I mean, could, could we say... I mean, could we say endorses the expansion of membership? Would that be right? Could we just say we endorse instead we're actually expanding it? Would you, Mr. Wright, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to assert?
No objection to that.
Endorses, be it further resolved, the city council insert endorses the expansion of, and then continue the membership of the existing housing collaborative? That's great.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, to me, that concept, the holistic approach, is the most exciting part of this. So often, we look at a problem and we say, well, to solve the problem, you just need to have these people do something different, or do that. When you're dealing with the big issues that the city needs to deal with, we need everybody who has an expertise or a perspective to focus on how the problem can be solved, so that, as we know, there's usually other consequences. Every action, there's another reaction. And all of the people, the professionals, the experts, skilled persons who deal with this stuff every day, we need their insights. And for the public, I want to mention, in expansion, we're talking about adding private developers, real estate attorney, a realtor, a private lending institution, a large employer who may have a workforce that needs housing, faith communities, charities and nonprofits. All of them have a perspective that I think can benefit the solution, and that, that's the most important part, and that's what the Bridges to Progress is doing, drawing all of the resources of our community together to solve a problem that has many tentacles that feed out and affect other parts of the communities. So, I think this is very exciting.
Thank you, and I will just say thank you to everyone who is a partner at the table. And it does take many multiple practitioners and folks who are dealing with this every day, so the fact that we had the first meeting as a housing authority and council, I thank you for your patience on us coming up with the language and you all helping assist that to move this vision forward. First, a statement in words, but then the action that will come behind it. And so, thank you very much for working on that. So, we have a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, number 11 is consideration of introducing a resolution authorizing the appropriation of $112,875 of the available $142,790 in the fiscal year 2020 general fund non-departmental poverty initiative budget. This amount is requested to support projects submitted by the Bridges to Progress, or B2P, task forces and the city's Department of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Hughes will provide a summary of this request. Vice Mayor Dolan, thank you.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I serve on the Steering Committee of Bridges to Progress, I'm liaison to the Early Childhood Task Force, and I serve on the Faith-Based Task Force. Although I do not have a personal interest and do not receive any benefit from these relationships, I feel that in order to avoid the appearance of any impropriety or bias, and with the consent of my other council members, I will abstain from voting on this matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan. Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, and members of council. As stated, the proposed resolution would utilize funds to support projects submitted by Bridges to Progress Task Forces and the city's Department of Parks and Recreation. Bridges to Progress is a Lynchburg-centered effort to reduce poverty and increase median household income, created through meshing the Bridges of Central Virginia and the From Poverty to Progress initiatives in 2018. A steering committee comprised of 10 leaders from Bridges of Central Virginia and From Poverty to Progress act as liaisons to 10 task forces, and that's what created the Bridges to Progress initiative. They're focused on tackling the major barriers to residents moving out of poverty and working toward increasing median household income. These task forces, along with the city's Department of Parks and Recreation, worked diligently to draft nine funding proposals presented in this summary. The Community Development Advisory Committee, or CIDAC, met on November 20, 2019, to hear presentations on all applications. As you're aware, the CIDAC includes five city residents and two city council members. The recommendations from that CIDAC meeting of November 20 are before you this evening. At this time, I'd like everyone involved in this process and in the Bridges to Progress initiative that's here to stand. I thank them for their participation, and I'd like you to put a face with those that have been doing the work over these years. And subject to any questions, I appreciate you listening to our recommendation. Thank you all for coming again, and they're here for any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, and thank you for everyone that's here this evening. I will turn to our members, our Chair of the CIDAC Committee, for the next motion and information. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Mr. Hughes said, we did meet on November 20. We entertained nine applications. CIDAC was charged with the responsibility to make a determination as to how the city would spend the funding that city council authorized previously. We spent several hours having very detailed analysis and discussion about the merits of each of the nine applications. You will see from the report that eight of those applications were approved. There was one that was not approved, and interestingly enough, that is the smallest application, and I can comment about that in a minute, but the presentations from each of the groups were very focused on specific tasks that would achieve the goal of their particular subcommittee. The assignment, the alignment between the expenditures and the goal and the means to achieve the goal were carefully, carefully analyzed and made great sense to the, to the task, to the CIDAC Committee. I thank Councilmember Wright, he served as co-chair of that, and in the end, we approved those eight and not the smallest one. And ask Councilmember Wright if he wants to comment in any way.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, and thanks to all of you for, for being here this evening. So, I would actually suggest that we add the smallest one, smallest request back in. It was not clear to me at the time, the value of that project, and sort of in follow-up conversations with, with members of the proposing committee, it was made clear that, in fact, this actually did have a lot of value, and certainly, given the very modest amount, it's $1,500, given the very modest amount of the request, it certainly seems like a reasonable proposition and one I'm proud to, to reverse myself and endorse. So, I'd like to suggest to council, recommend to council, that we increase the amount of $112,875 by $1,500 to accommodate the additional request and make it a full nine.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. The, the item that was excluded by the majority of CIDAC was the Early Childhood Education Daycare Number Two, and that's a program that seeks to provide daycare funded by private contributions to support employees of local businesses who either miss work, or truant from work, or have difficulties performing their work because of the childcare responsibilities that they have. And the purpose of the funding was to have a kickoff event to bring all of the major, or as many major employers of the city together to explain how businesses and employers benefit by having reliable daycare for their employees. And in order to deliver that message, it was thought that there should be some educational breakfast, and so, this, this funding would somewhat finance that. The resistance to funding it was based on the fact that because it was such a small amount of money, that some private entity should be able to be a donor of that and not draw from the fund. But in order to solicit the contribution from a private entity, we felt there would be a lot, or at least the minority felt, there would be a lot of legwork and meetings and delays to try to individually relay that message to the employers, and it would be better to have a single event at a single place and deliver that message and see how, where it goes from there. And I'm glad Councilmember Wright has reversed his position on it, and I would thoroughly endorse adding that $1,500. And you can see how it's laid out in the materials that you've been provided with. And we have representatives from that group. Dr. Brennan is here, and I think Ms. Wesley is here, too, if you have any questions about it.
All right, thank you. And I have a motion. Is there a motion?
I think Councilmember Wright made it, and I would second.
All right, thank you. No further discussion? All right, thank you. It's open to discussion of council members. And Councilmember Wilder?
Again, I've looked at all the proposals, I'm so glad to see the funds being used to help address poverty issues in our community, so I do support this motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Helgason?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just got one question. You know, it's under the food task force, so, but under the food task force, it looks like they are purchasing carts that can carry up to 200 pounds of groceries, which is a lot of food. I mean, 200 pounds of groceries, so I don't know if anybody had a rationale behind that, maybe to kind of explain it, or, that one seems kind of, it's, so we're buying a cart so someone can take home hundreds of pounds of food.
All right, I think Councilmember Nelson has a.
I can briefly answer that. I don't want to speak for the task force subcommittee who have representatives here, but there's a significant problem when a person, in order to do comprehensive shopping for their family, needs to go to the grocery store, and if they don't have transportation, they are limited as to what and how much food they can carry home. And in order to get it home, they must have, rent a cab or something, because you can't carry a whole lot of food on a bus, or carry it home on your back and in your hands. So, it was, research indicated that having a durable, reliable shopping cart into which you can put a substantial amount of food would allow a person to do shopping, conduct their shopping in a convenient manner, and purchase items when it's appropriate to purchase them, perhaps when they're on sale or otherwise, and get them home without having to pay cab fare or the inconveniences of having to lug a lot of bags up and down a bus. And apparently, these carts were designed and engineered to be able to enable a person, particularly of any age or ability, physical abilities, to accomplish shopping. So, it was felt that this addressed the food element, to have healthy nutritious food in a home and not be limited to only purchasing that which they can carry in their hands.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Wright?
And I would just add that, that part of the request is that the individuals who would be served by this program would be identified by local, you know, area agencies and organizations that serve underserved populations, so it's not as if it would just be, it'd just be set out for anybody to take. It would be a thoughtful implementation of the program.
All right, thank you both. Councilmember Perrow?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I very much appreciate the dialogue that CIDAC had on this. I read the meeting minutes and saw the dialogue going back and forth, and, and, you know, I thought it was probably a little light on discussion until I looked at the meeting's start time and realized it had gone about two and a half hours. So, you all had a very full discussion. I feel certain it's impossible for the minutes to catch it all. We're getting ready to entrust $114,375 of public tax dollars to individual groups, citizen groups, and we need to make sure that those tax dollars are spent effectively and in accordance with what you said, and that you have measurable results. I very much appreciate the metrics that you all provided. I read all of them, and I think it's, it's important that city council and city staff review those metrics to make sure that the taxpayer dollars that are used to support that program were effective or not effective. And I'd just ask that all of you report those metrics truthfully straightforward so that we can all make better decisions about how to, how to, try to ease this, this problem. I don't think we're, I can't say solve it, because I don't think we're ever gonna solve this problem, but how can we make it better? How can we make it better in the long run? And, and by having quality data coming back from these programs, and I admire you for, for the concepts that you guys came up with, I think that was really good. And to have data on how they work is just gonna inform us to how we can do a better job of it next time. So, thank you for doing this, and I'll support the motion as it stands, and please be good stewards of our, of our tax dollars, and I hope that you all have enormous success in your programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, I just want to thank everyone for the work that you've been doing. It has been ongoing and sometimes maybe a little bit grueling, because so often you meet, and thank you for these ideas, and thank you for helping the citizens who will benefit from each of the projects and the programs. So, thank you very much, and if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes. Thank you. Six with one absentia. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out this evening. Next is consideration of repealing section 17-2, 17-3, 17-4, 17-5, 17-6, 17-18, and 17-19 fences and walls of city code due to conflicting regulations with the zoning ordinance and Virginia state code. Staff will provide a summary of the request, and this is Mr. Irwin. Thank you.
This is a housekeeping measure. Back in 1959, city council amended the city code to include a number of provisions regulating fences within the city. So, those restrictions have been in place for a number of years. In 2016, when the city amended the zoning ordinance, it included a lot more specificity regarding the construction of fences, height, setbacks, that type of thing in the zoning ordinance. The provisions in the zoning ordinance are conflicting with the provisions in section, chapter 17. So, we're recommending those sections be amended. We no longer need to have them in both chapter 17 and the zoning ordinance, and fencing will be regulated by the zoning ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Irwin. Is there a motion? Yes, Councilmember Perrow.
Madam Mayor, move the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, thank you. The motion has been made. A second, any further discussion?
I'll just say that I was reading through this. It was pretty technical, but as far as Mr. Irwin says, the worst thing that you want to do is have, say something twice in one document differently. So, I think this is good, good cleanup. Let's just say it once and, and have it organized. So, thank you for the work, and I appreciate you doing this, Mr. Irwin.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next is the consideration of introducing a resolution approving the use of $3,184 of the capital improvement program, Community Park Investment Fund, to match funding for a youth remembrance trail along the James River. The funds were appropriated in a previous fiscal year, and Ms. Jones will present a summary of this request. Thank you.
Mayor Tweedy, members of council, the Youth Remembrance Trail along the James is a project which includes benches and signs along the Earthen Trail on Percival Island, providing view sheds of the James River. The purpose of the project is to provide the general public a place of solitude, peace, and reflection to remember youth who have passed away in the Lynchburg area. In addition to the benches, two signs will be placed at the beginning and end of the trail and stepping stones along the way. The project creator, a Brookville High School senior, Maggie Mace, raised over $3,100 for the project. Maggie Mace has been working, this is different than a Maggie Mace from the Parks and Rec Department. Maggie Mace has been working with the city staff for well over one year on this project. The Community Park Investment Fund, just to remind council, is a 50/50 matching fund in Lynchburg Parks and Recreation Department's capital improvement budget. It was established to match funds raised by individuals and organizations for park and trail projects within the city of Lynchburg, and these funds, as already mentioned, have already been appropriated. The project is a partnership with the project creator Maggie Mace, Lynchburg Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the James River Association.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, thank you for that request summary. Is there a motion for this project?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right.
And Ms. Mace?
Thank you very much, and please. And please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you for the project. Okay. Consideration of introducing a resolution is next, to amend the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget and appropriate $11,462 from the Friends of Lynchburg Parks and Recreation to implement the new Fit and Strong Program, a collaboration of organizations falling under the umbrella of Live Healthy Lynchburg. And Ms. Jones will present this request.
Okay. Mayor Tweedy, members of council, the Fit and Strong Program is a lower extremity osteoarthritis program that targets low-income seniors who may not be able to afford other fitness and rehab programs. This is a pilot program that's free of charge to all the participants. The program is already at capacity. The program addresses the health equity focus in our department's strategic plan and is also a play-healthy initiative of Live Healthy Lynchburg. The funding for this program was made possible through Centra Foundation and funneled through the Friends of Lynchburg Parks and Recreation, which is a 501(c)(3). It was supported, collaborated on by Live Healthy Lynchburg, and voted on by the Board of Live Healthy Lynchburg. Live Healthy Lynchburg Board also voted for Fit and Strong... The Fit and Strong License, which is through the University of Illinois, to reside with the Lynchburg Parks and Recreation Department. The classes meet for 24 90-minute sessions. The first 60 minutes are devoted to physical activity, including flexibility, low-impact aerobics, strength training, balance exercises focusing on lower body function. The remaining 30 minutes addresses health education. Participant outcome assessments are conducted at the beginning and at the end of the program and have to be reported out to Centra as well as University of Illinois. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jones. And this went to Finance Committee this morning. So I will turn to our Chair of the Finance Committee, Councilmember Helgason.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as was presented, lots of good utilization. I guess I... And Finance Committee met and discussed it and makes a recommendation for approval.
All right, thank you. There's no second needed. Is there any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriate $631,921 with resources from the Virginia 911 Services Board to fund the city of Lynchburg Public Safety Answering Points, or PSAP, request for costs needed to implement next-generation 911. And Ms. Foster will present a summary of the request.
Thank you. Mayor Tweedy and members of council, the Virginia 911 Services Board is leading Virginia's efforts to transform an outdated 911 system into a digital network that is faster, more efficient, and has greater capabilities to better serve our citizens and visitors for years to come. These updates are being made across the Commonwealth and will result in an IP backbone that will provide greater connectivity between our 911 centers. Our deployment schedule, we're scheduled to finish this project in the second quarter of calendar year 2021. But prior to that, we'll be doing different phases of this project. And the first part of that is text to 911. That will give our citizens the ability to send us text messages if, for some reason, they're not able to actually dial 911. It will also help those that are using TTY and TDD devices or equipment to contact 911. This will give them greater ease of access. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else? All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, this did come before the Finance Committee meeting this morning. And the grant, as discussed, is 100% reimbursable, $631,000. I guess the only... The texting option is not... When you're texting, you're still dialing, but you're not able to necessarily speak because you may be hidden somewhere, or you can't say, "Hey, I'm in trouble." But you can text, kind of like at council meetings when we have other things to relay information. We can't just stop and say, "Hey, how you doing?" So the texting, I think, is a good option. You mentioned that it may be rolled over, over the course of probably three years.
It will. This project will go across multiple fiscal years. And like I said, the texting is the first part of that project, and then we'll move into the actual where we'll have the IP network. And then we move into the phase where the cost will change as far as what the services cost, and the state will be picking up those costs for two years. So it will go across multiple fiscal years.
And the old, like, the TDY systems where you, if you're hearing impaired, used to have to plug your phone in and kind of type with it. This is nice in the fact that if you're at the grocery store, you can utilize it.
Right.
So the Finance Committee met and recommends it for approval.
All right, thank you. There's no second. Councilmember Perrow?
I'd just like to comment a little bit on this. I've been involved with this program for the past year and a half through the Virginia... Virginia... VGIS, Virginia Geographic Information Network Advisory Board, which is... I sit on that as an appointment by the governor. And as the local elected official liaison, Virginia First State has reached out to me and others saying that they needed somebody to fill this role. They didn't have anybody. Evidently, the Commonwealth has trouble finding people to fit certain roles, just like we do. However, I will not be qualified to sit on this effective July 1 because I'll no longer be an elected official. It's... I'm the westernmost person that sits on this board. It's a very interesting board. If any of you would like some information about this next-generation GIS rollout, which is fascinating, because, you know, think about the phone and where you're calling in or texting in or whatnot on the phone. It allows it to be pinpointed, but based on where that cell phone signal is picked up. So if you're sitting in the middle of the James River and you've got a problem, and you've got cell phone service and you call in, is it Campbell County that gets it? Is it Appomattox County? Is it Amherst County? Is it St. Lynchburg? Is it Bedford County? Depending on where you are. So the work that Ms. Foster is doing is helping define those parameters and understanding where the... Each of the counties can get to, where the city can get to easiest, based on the location of that call. It's a significant amount of work. Virginia is very far ahead of the other states in rolling this out. And it's fascinating. If any of you are interested, I'm going to need a replacement, and I will be happy to make introductions for you all to the group there. And I think they would shepherd along an application if you're interested in it. Just let me know. I have one more meeting left. It's a quarterly... It's quarterly meetings in Richmond, and they reimburse your mileage, which is really nice. Ah, I didn't report that on my... On my thing.
Don't say it.
Ah, I need to amend it.
And I would like to say to Councilman Perrow's point about the boundaries, that our GIS group here in the city has been spectacular in supporting us in this effort, because they are the ones that are having to go through and verify that the boundaries are correct and that all of that GIS information is correct, that this system will now be based on GIS information and not, in the past, your traditional landlines. We had your home address, and that's what comes up when you dial 911. This is a much more advanced system, and GIS has been a critical component of that. And when they are submitting their data to the state and we're getting that back, they are really well above where most localities are at. They're doing just a super job, and Allison Johnson leads that group. And we really couldn't be doing what we're doing without their support. So this is definitely a team effort, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. Thank you. And the motion passes seven to zero, and thank you for working on the project. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriate $103,953 with resources of $51,976 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services Rescue Squad Assistance Fund and $51,977 from the fiscal year 2020 general fund fire department budget to purchase three LifePak 15 cardiac monitors for the fire department. And Chief Wormser will make the summary of the request.
Evening again, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. This Rescue Squad Assistance Fund grant is something that we typically apply for several times a year. And in this case, it's a 50/50 match. We're replacing three cardiac monitors, which we use on a daily basis on all of our apparatus, both fire trucks and medic units throughout the city, to provide 12 lead capacity as well as defibrillation capability. We can transmit those 12 leads on EKGs to the hospital directly wirelessly from the scene. And so the three monitors that we're replacing are monitors that have aged out and are no longer serviceable. We are fortunate that we have a service contract that does allow us to extend the life of our monitors, but in this particular situation, these monitors are ready to be retired. And so we're getting a grant for three new ones.
Thank you, Chief Wormser. And this did go to the Finance Committee on September 24 of last year. And then today, January 28, I'll turn to Councilmember Helgason.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last September, what the Finance Committee approved filing the request for the grant, and then we just got word that we received the grant. So we met today to appropriate the funds, and obviously, we're thankful that the fire department has recognized equipment that is needed periodically. So they budgeted rather than coming to the Finance Committee to take the reserve. So they budgeted that in their current budget because it was equipment that is going to be needed to make sure they can utilize it effectively. I think there's three of them that are going to be going in ambulances that have the greatest need. And Finance Committee met this morning and made a recommendation for approval.
All right, thank you. There's no second. Are there any further questions? All right, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. And next is consideration of adopting the revised emergency operations plan, and this will be Ms. Piper Van De Pier. Thank you very much.
I'm Mayor Tweedy and members of council. I've been working on this emergency operations plan update for about a year and a half now with the help of lots of other city departments, including my own emergency services. I'm going to quickly review the importance of emergency management in our community and why this plan is important to the overall emergency management effort and some of the key changes that have occurred to this plan since the last update in 2016. Emergency management is all of the functions of the community that involve ensuring the community is prepared for disasters and will be disaster resilient. It takes the coordination of a lot of people with different specialties to make preparedness and resiliency a reality. For Lynchburg, it's a whole community effort. It takes every city department and several non-city partner agencies for the larger-scale operations, such as damage assessments, a mass notification system, sheltering plan, a plan to handle debris after a storm, and the list goes on. But it also takes the efforts of individual residents and our local businesses to prepare themselves for disaster. And it takes making information available to our residents and businesses about the best way to do that. Harnessing the opportunity for better community outcomes really requires an inclusive and diverse approach. So this plan is an overview of how our city works together during times of disaster. It assigns responsibilities to lead and support agencies for various emergency functions. Some examples include public safety, hazmat response, mass care or sheltering, external affairs, volunteer and donations management, and several others. It also discusses how we manage the EOC, which is our Emergency Operations Center, which serves as the overall coordination and planning center for the locality during a disaster. In summary, the EOP puts our process in writing so that we can manage a disaster in the most effective, efficient, and timely manner. So since this EOP was last updated in 2016, our community has experienced several emergency events. The tornado in April 2018, College Lake Dam flooding in August of that year, and preparations for Hurricane Florence in September 2018. These events gave us the opportunity to practice and exercise our plan and helped us to understand where our EOP could benefit from some changes. So our changes include the damage assessment and long-term community recovery responsibilities were combined into one section. This made sense to us because community development is the lead agency over both of these. Damage assessments are really a part of community recovery and could be considered the kickoff event for transitioning out of response and into community recovery phase. Volunteer and donation management responsibilities have transitioned from communications and marketing to parks and recreation. This change took place because Parks and Recreation has a full-time volunteer coordinator on staff who's well-equipped to handle that task in the context of a disaster. The City of Lynchburg Disaster Recovery Group, CLDRG, was added as a support agency under the damage assessment and long-term recovery section. The CLDRG is made up of faith-based nonprofit government business and other organizations working in the city to assist residents as they recover from disasters. They were formed as a result of the 2018 tornado and were extremely helpful to the recovery effort for both the tornado and the flooding later that year. There's a greater emphasis on information technology and cybersecurity events. The Director of Information Technology for the city was added to the Emergency Policy Team, which is a Subcommittee of the Leadership Team, which advises the city manager in pre-emergency planning and incident command and recovery. The Department of IT is also designated as the lead agency for all cybersecurity incidents, and is part of the strategic management team as needed. And some additional policies were added as a result of lessons learned in incident response between 2016 and present. For example, additional information to guide shelter volunteers and employees regarding both media presence at an emergency shelter and sex offender requests to stay at an emergency shelter. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. And the Madam rests with council. And is there... Yes, Councilmember Helgason?
Just a question. You know, maybe I didn't... I saw it in here earlier, now I can't find it. So we have an emergency response manager, right? Who's the one in an emergency? Who's the one that's in charge?
So the Emergency Management Director for the City of Lynchburg would be Bonnie, our city manager. Those responsibilities are delegated to Melissa Foster, who's our Emergency Management Coordinator.
So the coordinator. I pulled up a list of our local... You know, it's a... I guess it's local emergency managers. Lots of them are fire chiefs. And so it seemed like where there was actually a... Not a volunteer fire department, but where locality had an actual full-paid fire department, the person that was kind of the coordinator was somebody that had been brought up, you know, through the ranks, so they've seen responses to emergencies and whatnot. I don't remember... Is this just something that you assign, Bonnie? Or is this... As I read this document, a lot of it says that council's doing this, and then we assign or we delegate. What's council's role on... You know, when I'm thinking about an emergency, and I'm thinking about the train that blew up, and I'm thinking about other things, and I'm thinking about what happens across the Commonwealth of Virginia, normally, it seems like that person is a person that kind of worked up through the ranks of the fire department. Is there... Is that ours, or is that yours?
First, council's role is to declare an emergency should I ask for it. This is a model that has worked in the past, and I continued it on from the prior city manager, quite frankly. And it's not broken, so we just continued this model as it has worked in the past.
So not a rationale, just...
Correct. Did you have anything to add, Melissa?
Well, I understand what you're saying as far as, you know, there are a lot of localities that emergency management is still part of either the fire department or the police department. What we've discovered through the years is that not necessarily do you need a... Someone who has been on the street to be the one that is coordinating resources, that I didn't fight fires and I didn't stop cars, but I did come up through the ranks of a public safety agency. And I think that prepared me very well to be the emergency coordinator, to be the one that is coordinating resources, that that's really what the EOC is, is that when we activate that emergency operations plan and then we open that EOC, basically, that is the communication center for that particular event. And I do understand that there are some in fire service that do not like that model. And this was a decision that Kim Payne made years ago to move that out of And this was a decision that Kim Payne made years ago to move that out of the fire department. And actually before that, it was at the police department. So he moved it from the police department. And maybe he actually had it in his office for a while. There was a firefighter that was filling the position, but I don't know that he was actually working at the fire department.
There's a person I remember a long time ago that had kind of coordinated and wrote this. I think it was Les Puckett.
Yes, Les Puckett. And he worked at the fire department and that was before I really was involved in the emergency management side of things. But with emergency management, it's really about managing the resources, that you need someone there that's coordinating the resources. One of the things that we have struggled with through the years is that our frontline responders sometimes think that the EOC is trying to take command of the situation and that's not what the EOC is there for. We're there to support that incident commander that is in the street or in the field and dealing with the overturned railcar. That they had the on-scene commander and he was coordinating that response at the scene. But there were a lot of things happening in the background that they needed support for and that's our role in emergency management. It's not to fight the fires, it's not to take care of the riots, it's to provide them with the resources that they need to do that. And then to help with that emergency policy team, to coordinate those planning meetings and to support them as well. So.
So if I could just say on behalf of Melissa, so having experienced a couple of emergencies, one pretty big one and a couple of smaller ones, Melissa Foster is the one you want running the EOC when it happens?
And I would have to echo that and I thank you for the presentation and the explanation because having been in the room, this most recent one last year with the potential dam break, it was to see all of the various resource persons in the room and just available that included our public safety folks, but the railways and any other utility folks that were in there. But just to have that coordination and communication is key, so, and that was an experience for me to witness what you all do. So thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Higginson.
Just one last question then. So with that, in 2014, when you have the dates here, that's when that changed from a different department into the 911 center? Is that, what happened February 14th, 2014?
We took over emergency management, it's either in 2009 or 2010. It was around that time that the emergency management coordinator position was moved to emergency services. The 2014 date is, the original EOP, I think, was written in 2002, but then we brought it back and had it adopted in 2012 and then in 2016. The 2014, I think, were administrative changes that Kim Payne approved, that they weren't significant enough.
So the administrative change wasn't the administration of the, okay.
No, no. There were just some minor
Minor changes.
Details, minor changes that needed to be made and he approved those instead of bringing it back to the full council because they were really just administrative. It was just minor things that needed to be updated.
All right. Councilmember Para or...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm thinking about to that, to the, the train wreck and the Salsablanca fire. Being in the, in Lankom, your job there, well, you run the place now, but your job there has been really coordinating responses to, oh, an accident.
Right.
You have small disasters, in effect.
Absolutely.
So after several years of doing that, being appointed as, it seems natural that you would be coordinating the response to a large disaster. So I'm thinking about the train and yes, I know that the responsible people were on-scene and running the scene, but as I was leaving, I remember thinking that, we were all walking out of City Hall and I was thinking that'd be kind of cool to drive across the John Lynch Bridge and just kind of see and then come around and going back. And somebody had coordinated closing off the John Lynch Bridge just for safety's sake. And so that's not the person on the scene that's fighting the fire or, that's not the tip of the spear, that's the support group that does that. And that was the role that the emergency operations center was providing.
And we feel like that's a natural fit for what our folks are doing every day. That's the type of work that they're doing every day, that they're really coordinating those responses and those resources and stuff behind the scene. Now, I know that traditionally, most places are still using the model where it's in a fire department or a police department because they don't yet view emergency communications as true public safety. And that's something that we're seeing change across the nation. But, you know, there are, I understand that people feel like our communications staff don't have response experience, but they do. They're handling those disasters.
You're the first responder. The first responder. You pick up the phone.
Correct.
And in some cases, you're helping people provide, across the phone line, provide medical care for somebody else until
We are.
Until our onsite first responders can get there. So I think it makes a whole lot of sense.
It's just a shift. And like I said, to your point, Councilman, I understand. I understand what you're saying, that traditionally it has resided within a police department or a fire department. And there is a shift in the industry and I think we'll see that happening more often. I have more colleagues now that are the director of the 911 center and also the emergency coordinator than I've ever seen in the past. I think that's something that we're going to see shift and continue to go that way. But, you know, it really just depends on what the locality wants.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, I'll make, move the resolution if that's appropriate.
All right. Councilmember Nelson. I'll go to you, Councilmember Para, unless you have, thank you.
Yes. I'm very pleased to see that you're tweaking this again and particularly adding cybersecurity for, to it. We hear in the news almost every day, unfortunately, about what's happening around the world and in this country with regard to cybersecurity attacks and what can result from not being prepared for that. There's no question that Lynchburg has had a good emergency plan for some time. The Duraid Show in 2012 was responded to extraordinarily by the city and the city was recognized with accolades for how we handled that. And of course, that dealt with responses not just from fire department and emergency, but Public Works and Parks and Rec and Communications. Then, of course, in 2014, the railcar derailment on April 30th, 2014, right after we revised our protocols in response to what happened with the Duraid Show. So we learn from our experiences. And then after changing it in 14, we looked at it again in 18, both in April 15th with the tornado and then later in the summer with the flooding at College Lake. So I think it's very good that we keep our eyes open, we're not afraid to assess ourselves and come up and revise that which we've been praised for in the past and try to do it better, particularly with regard to cybersecurity. And certainly with what's going on with the coronavirus in other parts of the world, because the medical and health is a part of this, I think it's very important that we be ready for that and hopefully it doesn't have to be tested.
Thank you. Councilmember Para.
I forgot to add something. I was so fascinated by the discussion, earlier discussion, but Councilmember Nelson just said it all. I think you all, kudos to the entire staff for reassessing and learning and revamping based on, based on the good and the bad that you've learned from all this. I think that's an admirable quality. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And the motion has been made. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much for the presentation. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution endorsing the framework identified in the Lynchburg Plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. And Ms. Verchek and Mr. Wodoka will give us the summary of the request.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we are asking you to endorse the Lynchburg Plan, which you have spent four council retreats working on. And tonight, we are hoping that you will adopt a resolution to endorse the plan. Reed is going to spend some time just reviewing changes that have been made and how we will move forward with this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the city manager said, over the last year, city council and city staff have worked very hard to develop, clarify, and operationalize the priorities of the city as we develop an actionable plan that meets the needs of our community. The result of several city council retreats and lots of leadership team meetings, the Lynchburg Plan serves to clearly communicate the actions that the city will undertake to make continual progress as we cast our vision in three major priority areas. The first is the city's growing economy and, growing and redeveloping economy. Second is exceptional neighborhoods and strong families. And the third is resilient, agile, and innovative organization. Each of these priorities has a number of associated goals and operational initiatives. Each of the operational initiatives has an assigned fiscal year as well as a key owner, which primarily is one of the four interdepartmental collaboratives. Additionally, each goal has a number of metrics and that are intended to be tracked over time and progress on those initiatives will be reported to council twice annually. One thing I want to note is that in addition to the priorities that are listed above, city council identified exceptional public schools as a priority in addition to what we've said before. However, prior to the completion of the Lynchburg Plan, city council and the school board created the task force on the future of education in the City of Lynchburg. So rather than create an additional set of goals to go in this plan, this plan identifies the task force as a conduit for the creation of the variety of goals that we might want to undertake with, that might relate to exceptional public schools in our community. So the actions I really think will, in this plan, will guide, the statements in this plan will really guide our actions in the future and will have major impacts over the planning period and most importantly, will greatly affect the long-term success of our community. So a couple of items that we'll just point out that were changes from the last time we On page nine, we clarified number 1.1, which is providing a deliverable. We've clarified 1.5, which is talking about the human capital needs and making sure we're clear about what we're pivoting on. On page 11, we've said that we're going to develop a coherent strategy to invest in forward-thinking technologies throughout the city, as well as the one below that, is we clarified some statements there. On page 13, we have some changes just to wording, just to clarify that we're have, we're going to do, utilize a healthy living where there is a need. On page 16, we've clarified a metric that we, in November, we discussed just some confusing language in that metric, so we've clarified that. And then on the next page, we've clarified the deliverable as a heat map to show what's going on in the community. On page 19, we talked about protecting neighborhoods in the comprehensive plan. And we clarified on page 24 that we are going to look at both voluntary and involuntary turnover for employees. And then on the last item, we are going to talk about a rotating procurement audit as we go forth. So that was an item, as well as an evaluation of small women and minor union business and city contracts. So that all is to say that we have a, I think we have a really strong plan and we would love to have your endorsement after several iterations of discussions of this document.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. And Councilmember Higginson?
A quick question. On the front page here, under the fiscal impact, it says adding 1.2 million to support the future funding requirements of the task force for education. Help me with that. What is that?
So you'll remember when we, when the schools returned their fund balance, we took about a million two from that and said, hey, we know that there's money coming out, there will be recommendations coming out of the task force and we're going to set aside 1.2 million dollars to help start with that, whatever those recommendations may be.
So this was last year when they had the extra, even that, they gave back the eight, you know, the, almost the million bucks. Then they had money left over in their operating budget, of which some of it went to roofs and whatnot, and then another portion, I think that was five million or something, so 1.2 million went here for, rather than going back to what it was utilized for.
I don't remember precisely the numbers right now, so I think it was a December meeting where they came back and returned the fund balance and a million two that was to go. And it had, that all had to do with various capital projects that they wanted to have.
So this was, I think it was somewhere around five, that they had extra, right? So with that, we allowed them to utilize the extra money to be roofs and whatnot, but the others said, hey, don't spend it, let's keep more here. Okay. That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Then Councilmember Para.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move the resolution to adopt, to endorse a framework with the caveat that this comes back as a report to city council, ha-ha, in July.
July.
Yeah. Because I noticed, excuse me, I'll see if that gets a second.
Did Councilmember Wilder second?
And I'll, it doesn't have to be July, but at the beginning of 2021, I would recommend. The purpose of that is you've got a lot of, well, as I've said before, action without suspense is fantasy. You do have suspense dates in this. So I think it'd be prudent to take a look at these, see where you are in target, where you're not on target, and make adjustments as necessary and update it so as you go into FY21 that you know, so the council knows what to expect.
So one thing I didn't mention is we have built an internal structure for tracking these progress on these items and we intend to come back to you twice annually, some folks twice annually.
All right. Thank you, Council.
Reflected in the performance measures in FY2021 budget.
All right. Councilmember Wilder, anything? All right. Any further discussion? All right. Thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. And
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Higginson?
One item that I realize is not on our list, on our agenda, but our city assessor is here. I think this was going to be here tonight, maybe not. We had an item that we, we looked at all the items that we met at Finance Committee today, with the exception of one of them. This may have been intentionally not on the list, but I would ask if that needs to be our...
I'll defer to the city manager.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we are about to leave. I do want to mention that our clerk of council, Robin Craig, has been with the city for 15 years of service. So I wanted to acknowledge her 15 years of service in other departments, but she is here with us for the past year. So thank you for your service and we have a certificate for you, so you're very welcome. Yep. All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, birthday also?
Oh, and a birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We're not a good choir to sing, but we...
Scott Garibas going, can't really start singing now.
Oh, no. I can't do that. Well, thank you and the meeting is adjourned. All right.